A motion to the board of education.
So moved.
We're saying. All in favor?
I like that.
Angel, please join me in the pledge of allegiance. At the allegiance of this flag, in God's face, and to the Republican Party. Waiting for one player to move in. For this evening, we're going to take some matter of the out of order. Uh, for tonight's hearing, we're going to move first to section 5.1. Next agenda, which is recognition of the varsity boys' basketball team. We have with us this evening Assemblyman Brett Deal to present to them. So thank you for coming this evening.
Thank you.
And so you may always get in here.
Yeah, the floor is yours. I acted him by myself.
We will do that. Podium, wherever you want.
Thank you, Brian. And, uh, first of all, congratulations to the Pearson Whalers of 2022. Uh, I said something this morning when I was talking to the valedictories and salutariats. Jeff Dickless thinks I'm stalking him today because he's following him around. But as many of you, and many who may know, I graduated from this school in 1971. That was 51 years ago for those of you who don't have a calculator nearby. But, uh, and I'm very proud to be, uh, I'm a alum of Pearson High School. I tell people that all the time. Uh, I'm very proud of the scarlet and the black at all times. And, uh, believe it or not, I also played on the Pearson High School basketball team in 19, well, JV in freshman and sophomore and varsity in junior and senior year. And, uh, we had great teams in the late 60s. You guys have been compared to the, uh, the 1978 state champions in a very favorable fashion. I was in between those. The era in which I played was, it was called the down year. I played it and, uh, you know, when you're code, code Vishal was my code. Many of the gym and all of that, but, you know, I, I knew that I needed to go find another line of work, which I did because the country would come up to me and said, you know, kid, you're short, but you're slow. And, uh, that kind of described my, my, my high school careers. But, um, you guys, we're all so proud of you. I, you know, you live here in Sag Harbor. I've, I've often compared it to if you watch the movie Hoosiers, that's kind of how Sag Harbor has always felt about its basketball team. And, uh, you, you, you really lived the dream this year. You're so proud of, uh, your work as, uh, and, you know, by the way, you just don't win games. You, you, you made cardiac cases out of all your parents and fans. It's all of these are strong second halves, come from behind wins. Uh, you know, beating Carl Place for the Long Island Class C championship, uh, winning the regional against Alexander Hamilton, always a tough out with Alexander Hamilton, and making it to the state final four. Uh, and with a tremendous performance in the final four, coming up just a little bit short. We're not going to mention any more about that tonight. But, uh, an incredible year. And, uh, you know, as a, as a former Pearson graduate and, uh, you know, as a basketball player for this school, I, I just want to say thank you and how proud you made all of us. Uh, perhaps the most important thing, winning is important, you know, uh, but the, the fact that you were also named for the sportsmanship award speaks legion. It's not just about your basketball ability, but it's your character, uh, and your work as a team. And I will say this to you, you'll remember all the wins, you'll remember all the victories. But what you'll remember most of all from this experience, and certainly for me, that was the case, is you'll remember each other. You'll remember the teamwork, the work together, the special relationships that you developed during high school basketball. And, uh, you know, it's a special thing that you did. And again, we're so proud of you. And, you know, to commend this, you know, in the New York State Assembly and the New York State Senate, uh, we passed a resolution honoring the 2022 Pearson Whalers basketball team for all of its accomplishments. And, uh, the, the resolution here, you know, highlights all that you accomplished during this year. It was passed unanimously in the assembly and unanimously in the senate. Trust me, that doesn't happen a lot. But in the case of you guys, it did. And, uh, so it is my pleasure to say congratulations. And, you know, with this resolution, you will always be a part of, uh, of New York State history. You're in the record, you're there in the capital in Albany. So, uh, Coach, Coach Rahida and Vegeta and the team, uh, please come up and, uh, it's my pleasure to present you with, uh, I brought two. There's an extra one, but I wanted to present you with a copy of the resolutions and say, uh, congratulations for all the great work.
Thank you.
We think that each of the players announced themselves, so we everybody knows who you are. Starting with yeah, we'll go with you.
Aiden Smith.
Prince DeDere.
Brendan Monega.
Logan Hartsey.
Oliver Fessy.
Gary Blessey.
Cecil Munch.
Daniel LaRosa.
Brendan Burke.
Charlie Culver.
Wilson Bennett.
Yonah K.
I'm still short, so you guys have to be behind. Yeah. Let's do, uh, guards.
The lighting will be better.
Thank you very much.
We are going to go to, we're going to take a few things out of order tonight. We're going to take, uh, the superintendent's report and then public number one. Now, superintendent's report. Mr. Nels.
Thanks, Brian. So, um, tonight I was scheduled to talk about two items. Uh, first item is going to be a quick overview of the rendering for the park design. Um, but I dropped to the park board president and the renderings that we had did not include a couple of things we had discussed at the last meeting between the park board and the school. So we've decided to push that off until the 27th, at which time we'll have more complete renderings and the architects will appear and discuss the plan, uh, in more detail. So I'm going to push that off till the 27th. Um, the second part of the superintendent's report, uh, is to talk a little bit about school security. Unfortunately, um, it seems as though we have to have these types of presentations on a semi-regular basis, like for five years. Um, the first, I was working, uh, in Sag Harbor in 1999, and that was really when the landscape changed, because that's when Columbine shooting occurred. Uh, and since that time, we've had, um, and I can't even capture the number of the school shootings, but the ones that stick out as events that caused us to reassess what we were doing. Uh, Virginia Tech in 2007, Sandy Hook, 2012, Parkland, 2018, and unfortunately, uh, Valde, uh, this year. And all of those situations, many children, young people died. So where does that leave us, uh, as a school district? Um, the thing I want to emphasize is that none of those events, for the most part, have, um, altered what we have been committed to day in and day out. And that is providing the safest environment for our students, our faculty and our staff. Certainly some of the advice and the counsel that has come out of the reports that have been commissioned over the last 25 years has informed our practices and we've added things. Um, but what I wanted to do tonight was to provide a quick overview of our current practices as they relate to school security, uh, talk a little bit about what we value, and then end with a little bit of, um, some possible additions that we may have to consider moving forward. And then obviously provide an opportunity for people to ask questions. So one of those reports that came out, um, that I referred to before, that periodically our commission was the federal government's report in 2018. And in that report, and I'm referencing this because I think the conclusions are consistent with our approach here in Sag Harbor, they mentioned some key elements to a, um, to a comprehensive school security plan. Uh, and those are, you know, character development through the curriculum, K through 12, um, attention to cyberbullying, which was starting to really surface in around 2018, a couple of years before that. And that informed the Dignity for All Students Act, which has been, um, guiding our practices, how we operate day in and day out with regard to bullying. Mental health and counseling. And just to give you some context, when I came to Sag Harbor in 1996, we had two guidance counselors in the district. We now have five. Uh, we had one psychologist, we now have two. We had, uh, one social worker, we now have one and a half. And very importantly, we had zero assistant principals, and now you have three. And all of those people interact with students on a regular basis. And from my perspective, um, enable us to create a kind of environment where we're able to keep tabs on how our students are doing, uh, talk about their situations and help them in a proactive way. So what you see up there is another, um, sort of summary page that came out of another report from the Department of Homeland Security in 2018. And basically the four key elements to most security plans are connect, which refers to connecting not only with your community, but with local law enforcement to plan. Think about, uh, how you, how situations could potentially, um, evolve. And then related to that, when you have that plan, train, which are a lot of the lockdown drills and various other drills that we do through school day. Uh, and then report, which is what I was referring to before, which is when you build trusting relationships in a school community and you have the personnel trained to interact with kids and students and children, children and adults. You can head off problems hopefully before they rise to a level that, that you don't want them to be at. Move on to the next slide, Mr. Fisher. So this is a, um, an overview of the current security systems in place. I can't see that, so I'm going to turn this slide off.
Do you want us to pull the shades down?
Let's see how it's. That's a little better. Um, I'm getting old. So since 2000, um, we've added a lot of infrastructure changes. We have security cameras, uh, throughout all three buildings. Uh, a significant number of them, both inside and outside the building. Uh, and those cameras are monitored by security staff and greeters, which are the people at the front desk. We have pretty elaborate automated lockdown systems that our tech department has pretty much overseen. And those, those lockdown systems are connected to, uh, our local police departments. So basically, when we go into a lockdown situation, uh, Mr. Fisher, you want to provide a quick overview of the sequential steps that happen from a tech perspective?
Sure. Um, throughout the buildings, we have, um, buttons to notify, um, the authorities that we are in a lockdown. And those buttons trigger a number of events. The first thing that happens is, um, our central station monitoring services instantly notified that we're in lockdown. They ensure in contact for us here in this school, the East Hampton Village Police Department, because they are the ones that notify the local Sag Harbor Village Police of, uh, of an incident. And simultaneously, all of the exterior doors lock immediately. Um, the interior doors at the learning center also lock because they are the newer doors that have that, that capability. Um, there is a PA announcement that is played in each of the buildings in the principal's voice for that building, so that the students are familiar with the voice. Uh, the card access system that we have, the badges, they're disabled for all entry points and people cannot get into the building using their badges except for the police department. We've issued special badges just to our, uh, local police department for entry into the building during a lockdown situation. There are also strobe lights on the exterior of each of the buildings to alert people that are approaching the building, to turn around and not approach the building. And, um, also for people driving by to be aware that, that there's a situation taking place in the building.
Thank you. So in addition to those lockdown security, uh, protocols that are activated, we also have added security at each entrance, uh, to each building, learning center of the elementary school and a middle school, high school. And so there's a process when you enter a building, you show your ID, uh, you're issued a badge and then you're granted access to the building. It's a little bit different at the high school. It's worth pointing out that in the other two buildings, you can't access, uh, I don't think you can access the building at the elementary school until you are, until you show something and you're buzzed in even into the vestibule. It's a little bit different at the middle school, high school. But that's pretty common in many of the high schools that I've entered. So like if you go to a, many of the neighboring high schools, you walk into the front desk and they'll actually, you walk into a desk that's located in the school at which point security checks you out. But the, this, the decision that we could potentially make is to put a vestibule outside the building and have that protocol or procedure take place physically outside the building. That's one of the changes we could consider, uh, moving forward. Uh, the right side of that slide, uh, refers to a lot of the filtering that goes on with, uh, those students who are signed on to the school, um, internet system. And if any of the behaviors are flagged, then Mr. Fisher is notified. And so that's basically a filtering system. It's limited, Mr. Fisher, to those situations where people are signed on to, to our network. Is that correct?
Or if they are using one of our devices with their school, um, credentials. It's also being monitored.
And the reason I mention that is that that is limited in scope. And so, uh, you will hear, I think in the near immediate future, about efforts to, to monitor other areas. And that'll bring with it a whole host of privacy issues and challenges. I don't think I'm qualified to speak to that at this point, but I suspect that that's forthcoming. Uh, because we know that a lot of the chatter on the internet is a red flag or an opportunity for, for authorities to become aware of situations before they rise to a level that we don't want them to. Um, next slide, please. So one of the things that we've had, we've been very lucky, uh, with is that for the last, as long as I've been here since 1996, we've had a wonderful relationship with the Sag Harbor Village Police. So the current chief of police, AJ McGuire, and the police chief before that, Tom Fabiano, have always, um, been a great resource for our school. So much so that when we do our lockdown drills, often schools will do them with their own staff, the police come up and do them with us. So what typically happens is we'll schedule a lockdown drill and the police will be present when we initiate it. Uh, and then after the lockdown drill is complete and they participate in the drill, so they can see how it's going and provide feedback, then they debrief with us and give us feedback that we then go back to our staff with, so that the next time we do it, um, we do it better. And so typically we'll have, uh, one or two law enforcement officers in each building when the lockdown, um, transpires. Mr. Rolon, do you have anything to add? You can do this with Big Bird.
No, I, um, I guess I would add the piece that, um, just echoing what Mr. Nichols said. We were very fortunate to have this, this strong working relationship. And as Jeff mentioned with regards to, um, trying to, um, stave things off before they might escalate to a more dangerous level. We're also very fortunate that if, if we do catch wind of things in and around school, we can quickly access Chief McGuire or someone else at the department and they help us, um, get the information that will allow us to make thoughtful decisions. You know, we are really, uh, fortunate in that way as compared to some of the districts that don't have the access that we have.
We also provide professional development for security personnel. So they go out, um, to trainings, usually on Long Island and some in New York State, off the islands where they're maybe aware of the current thinking with regard to, um, school security. Uh, we do supply blueprints, uh, to the police department. So in the event that they're, God forbid, whatever, anything serious, they have access to the floor plans, they can share those with any other, uh, law enforcement teams that respond. Um, building level safety plans, those are not shared with the public, but we have one for each building. Uh, and they pretty much cover a lot of the contingency plans. Basically, when we go through, you know, work scenarios, there's a plan for each of those. And those are the drills that I spoke of earlier. Um, the next slide. This is, uh, some possible additions in terms of, of moving forward. Um, we have some additional cameras that we're, uh, considering, um, adding. We've got enhanced software that Mr. Fisher has shared with you in relation. Um, I talked a little bit about what I think the future might hold. And I think that has to shake out a little bit with the monitoring of social media sites and the extent to which, uh, school districts will have unfettered access to that and how privacy laws will, will run up against that. I'm looking forward to learning more about that. Uh, the automated lockdown systems right now, in order to get into a building, um, you have to either enter the main entrance, which for Pearson is on Division Street. For the elementary school, there's one main entrance. If you're going to enter anywhere else in the building, you have to have a, uh, a badge, which then electronically controls an entrance. Um, and the same is for the most part the case at the learning center as well. Um, we could be adding those swipe systems, uh, indoors. And, um, we're looking into the possibility of that so that you wouldn't have to use a key to lock a door. You could use a, a card, which would be quicker. Um, and Mr. Fisher's in the process of getting bids to do that. And I'll share that information, uh, with you when we have it. So, uh, that's sort of a summary of our practices. Again, I don't, nothing has changed in terms of what we've been doing the last year or two. We've tried to focus on what we're doing and do it thoroughly and do it well and make sure our staff and our students are trained. Um, the other questions that I won't talk about here are bigger issues than, than what I can address in terms of gun control and things like that. Uh, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any board questions first and then we'll go to the House.
Yeah, I'll be done.
We don't want you to fall asleep, Sam.
Mr. Nichols, thank you for the overview. I thought it was really helpful. Um, I have just a couple of questions. Um, I know a while back, and I don't remember if it was, I remember it was fading here, 2016, 2018. I know we had a forum, but before that we had hired a security consultant to come in and advise us kind of do an audit of where we were and advise us about what some of the new best practices are and some things we want to consider. And after that, we did implement many of the things they suggested. I didn't know if there's any consideration of perhaps having them, them or another revisit. Not that, not that we're not being considerate, but perhaps having an expert periodically check in with us might be of value. So I'd kind of put that out there. Um, and then secondly, you raised the issue of potentially creating a vestibule, like a, um, security vestibule before you come into Pearson. And that exists at the elementary school too, right? Well, you have to kind of stop and check in before you walk into the building.
You have to start. So the vestibule I envision is when you would have a security person in a building that would be outside, entering to the, to the main building.
So what if you're attached, you're thinking, like?
Almost attached.
Almost attached, okay.
Almost attached, yeah. You could have it attached, basically. Yeah, that person would be sitting in a little cubicle and that person would check credentials and then let the person in. Now, again, what, when you go to other schools, like today, I was at Hampton Bay's High School, which, uh, has gone, undergone a lot of renovations. And you, you walk in there and you check in. You go to South Hampton High School, you walk in, walk right into the lobby and you check in. So schools are sort of split on how they approach that.
Well, I'm just thinking that when we, we opened the learning center, we created a more secure entranceway, uh, with the understanding that that created some additional security. So I'd be curious as to, since I have one more meeting that won't be on the board, what is the process for the district and the board to evaluate whether we do that or not? Because it seems to make a bit of sense to me, um, without having any more information. So just, you know, kind of, is that something over the summer or fall you're going to consider or have debate on?
Yeah, we can talk to the school architects about that. We had some plans at one point.
Okay.
Uh, to do that, so we can, we can bring them up. Uh, this building principal at the time, not superintendent the last time to check up. But yeah, we had some plans.
Okay.
We can revisit that. And I looked at the literature that's come out. Um, it hasn't really significantly changed from 2018, which is when we had your audit done. But I still think that, uh, your suggestions lie, it can't hurt.
I know in, in the interim, something that might be possible would be some sort of screen in that interim vestibule that exists, right? So that you don't actually have to walk, you don't have to be let in before you talk to the guard. You can talk to them from.
Yes.
Outside, yeah.
And then they can see you.
And then like state your business.
Yeah, that makes a lot of sense.
The only question I had was, um, I was reading about how there's this, um, idea of there's lockdown drills where people are locked and then there's fire drills where people escape.
Yeah.
And I wasn't sure to what extent, you know, I was reading that there's a lot of emphasis put on locking and hiding and you're supposed to flee before you hide. Hide is the last resort. So just wanted to kind of bring that up as something to maybe, I don't know to what extent you already have plans where you discuss that in the place and say, okay, this is a fleeing situation as opposed to a hiding situation. And that might just be something to, to evaluate more if you haven't really gotten into it much.
When it comes to the, to the, um, an active situation, I am not an expert. So I'm very doubtful whatsoever on enforcement. And so. And so the explanation that I've received from them, not only in my exchanges with the Sag Harbor Village Police, but these trainings that I've gone to, is the whole goal of everything that we do is to buy time. Buy time so that the trained units can show up and address, God forbid, we ever have a situation like that. So I wouldn't feel qualified to speak about, you know, I haven't read anything about fleeing. We have consulted with the police regarding whether or not we had students on the backfield, what they would do in that kind of situation. And the advice was to flee. I'll certainly bring it up.
Thanks. Yeah, that's all I meant, just to kind of look into it.
I had some other comments. You know, the scene in the past, I remember we had that discussion that sometimes indoor, the high schools always open because it's not there, a condition that's quite vast. How we can secure that, you know, all access to the building now was like closed and there's no easy way.
Yeah, I think that that's a lot of a management issue. You can alarm the doors, but it's also holding students and faculty and staff accountable if they leave a door open or properly open. And that's something, it's just a manager will follow up on our end.
And I mean, if they do, you know, I understand the situation. There's obviously, you know, we can secure the doors on the inside that they have access to the rest of the building.
We're in the doors that we talked about. As New York may think we're talking about that, maybe here.
Yeah, smart. That was when I said that, Scott, you want to talk about what we, you and I have been sleeping about with the cars?
For this building and?
For the swipe systems, yeah.
Yeah, so when we go into a lockdown situation now, the teachers have to physically take the key and lock the door. With the lockdown system, if we switch to the similar locks that we have at the Learning Center, those doors are automatically locked as soon as we go into lockdown. So nobody has to fumble for a key or anything like that. So that takes all the guesswork out of that piece.
Just to give you a sense of how, I don't want to go into great detail, but when we do have a lockdown drill, the announcement goes over and then these teams of law enforcement officers and school personnel will circulate the building. And usually within about 15 to 20 seconds, everything is locked in the building. So we're walking through the building and, you know, jump in if you think it's longer than that, but it's usually about 15 or 20 seconds.
Correct.
Everybody's in, secured, away from line of sight outside, away from the window, shades, that kind of stuff. So unfortunate that that's the kind of planning we have to do. But that's the world we're in right now.
I have one more question. After the most recent horrific school shooting, did we as a district see a response from the children? Did we see a heightened concern from certain children? Were they nervous? Did they bring it up? I'm just curious, was there any observation of that?
I'd turn over to the building principals to speak to it. Probably more likely for the night.
I would say from the middle high school level, I don't think we got anything in particular. I think our parents were more concerned than our children. Mike?
Mr. Malone?
And likewise, we actually made a thoughtful decision at the elementary. We'll not discuss it this time. But prepared the staff and it could come up and shared some thoughts on how to help console the children if need be. And then as Jeff mentioned, we support the personal student who prepared, but we did not have to access that.
I just have two questions. The, you mentioned professional development for security for the staff as well as are there professional development requirements for lockdown situations and also identifying, you know, social, emotional distress students?
So there's been professional development over the years. So school personnel every year has to read the building-level safety plan and sign off if they've done that at each building. And then in addition to that, we've arranged for both these trainings and faculty meetings, tabletop exercises and things like that. And then training for the, for the security personnel is more, if we become aware of a training that's happening on Long Island or we think is pertinent, then we will offer it to the entire security crew. And usually one or two will go and then they'll turn key train or let their peers know what they learned.
And the other question I had was, some of the other surrounding districts have, you know, you mentioned a good relationship with the police department, like with SROs or something similar. Is there any thought, maybe not something so formal, but some sort of coordination with the police to do some sort of educational piece or mentoring? Just to kind of be, I haven't been in this world a lot with COVID, with the COVID situation, obviously, much in the past couple of years. But I don't know what the presence is within the schools with the police. If, you know, if they're known to walk without the buildings or if they're kind of separate. Is that something that we might want to just think about incorporating a little more?
Certainly think about it. And I've given it some thought over the years. And, you know, I'm being redundant by saying that we've had this really positive relationship with the police department. A lot of the SRO programs, which are school resource officers, basically where a police department places an individual that's in the department inside the school and the roles of that person are a little different than a traditional police officer. They're a police officer, but they're also a resource officer. So they can provide training, build the relationship between students and the police, that kind of thing. A lot of the reading that I've done, certainly open to other perspectives, suggests that those programs haven't really, from a, from an empirical evidence standpoint, improved school safety. I'd certainly be open to considering it if I can see evidence suggesting that. Haven't seen it to date. And the other thing is, and I don't mean this as an offense to the police at all because I think they're wonderful and we're very lucky to have the relationship we have. But from a, from a counseling perspective with students, I would much prefer to have, you know, guidance counselor or a school psychologist or something, somebody like that. And I don't even think that's the kind of exchange that you were referencing. I think you were just talking about maybe demystifying is not a good word, but maybe making kids a little bit more comfortable with the police presence as well.
Yeah, just part of the community.
Yeah.
I think we can get information on that. I think South Hampton, East Hampton, West Hampton, Ridge Hampton all have them. So yeah, we got, get some information from what's going on.
Yeah, it's a little bit different than like, like for instance, I was in Hampton Bay's today. And they share a school resource officer with like four other districts. So that person's in there like one day a week. But again, I think getting more information about it, both from what's available and then looking at the empirical evidence about what are the impacts, I think we make a decision as a community after we have all that information. If that makes sense.
And all of our, all of our security are retired.
Yes.
So definitely we have the police retired presence in the building just without the uniform and badge. Yeah, I would also imagine that if you're dealing with, you're having it be a school counselor versus a former resource manager, that as, you know, there are times when kids might have some speed bumps in their career in school and things may come out. And if you're a former law enforcement officer, you may be legally obligated to take steps that a school would have a little latitude in addressing with a student. And from what I've read, that could be actually advantageous in preventing violence versus escalating issues and creating conflict and anger. So I think it's a complicated issue, question to address.
Yeah, I think it's a decision for the community to make. So I think as superintendent and as the building administrator, we have a role to prevent, to present the evidence and the research that's out there. And then the Board of Education represents the community have the, I guess, the chore of deciding how to proceed.
I have one other follow-up. So, you know, within the district itself, we have the great staff that you went over, you know, social and mental support for the students and staff. But when it gets beyond the school, I think it's recognized that the resources are limited for situations that may be challenging for the students beyond stuff the school can control. Is that something that as a district we should be thinking about and how to try and mitigate some of that? Because some of that obviously does come back and affects what happens in the school.
Yeah, there's a lot. It's not something that obviously we talk about all that much, but the extent to which the faculty and staff, those on the faculty and staff charged with these kinds of things, guidance staffs, which looks like how the social administrators interface with area providers. They do that a lot. So we're in touch with, you know, family service league, various psychiatrists, psychiatrists at Stony Brook, psychiatrists at residential facilities and places like that. And it's not uncommon. It doesn't happen all that frequently. But we certainly have facilitated grant for to the emergency psychiatric ward for situations that are beyond the scope of what we can go. And there have been efforts over the years to address the issue that you just brought up, which is that the availability of resources on the East End is somewhat limited. So there have been some initiatives that the district has gotten involved in that have sort of eased that burden. And we can provide a report on that at a future board meeting.
That'd be great.
Give you an overview, yeah.
Public input number one. Public input number, the Board of Education encouraged public participation in school-related matters at public meetings. Public input is reserved for comments related to agenda, non-agenda items, does not require assignment. Period for public input is unrestricted to accommodate as many comments as possible. The board does have the discretion to limit public input if meetings aren't consistently long. Any group or organization wishing to address the board must identify a single spokesperson. Comments should be as brief as possible. New speaker will be permitted to speak for longer than three minutes during public input one. If a member of the public wants to address the board more than once, they will wait until all others have had the opportunity to do so. All speakers are to conduct themselves in a civil and respectful manner. Obscene language, libelous statements, threats of violence, statements advocating racial, religious or other forms of prejudice will not be tolerated. Board will not permit in public session discussion regarding concerns about individual district personnel or students. Persons wishing to discuss these matters should present their questions and/or concerns at the appropriate administrator during regular business hours. A member of the community fails to conduct themselves appropriately or violates the rules set forth herein, board has the right to suspend that community member's privilege to speak during public input. Persons making comments at board meetings will address remarks to the president and may direct questions or comments to board members or other district officials only upon the approval of the president. Board members and superintendents shall have the privilege of asking and answering questions of any person who addresses the board. President shall be responsible for the orderly conduct of meetings and show rule on such matters as, as the time to be allowed for public discussions and appropriateness of the subject matter to be presented. President shall have the right to discontinue any public input which violates this policy. Except with that, is there anyone here in person or online that wishes to participate in public input number one? Yep, a Jeff's sitting. Please just give us your name. Matt, you're just naming after me.
Good evening. My name is Yessenia Kachimbo. I have three children, one at the elementary school, one at the Learning Center, and one at home. Chair of board members, now that I have had a few days across the across the country, I was led by families in Texas. Now that I'm pride and shout it, I'm here to ask you, will you please address our school community and ask that parents, grandparents, and students old enough to vote to put pressure on our elected officials who pass sensible gun laws and accessible healthcare? Why sensible gun laws? Because we cannot continue to put the burden on our children and hope for the best. Because we have seen other countries react to gun violence and it's worked. The Second Amendment may not be more valuable than the lack of a child. Why, what are sensible gun laws? Waiting periods, psychological evaluations, background checks, higher minimum age, to name a few. Why healthcare? While there isn't any one specific predictor to gun violence, we know that assailants at some point face trauma, neglect, or violence. By making healthcare accessible to all and mental health a priority, we can help someone who committing a crime if not to fact. Lastly, I ask that we work together towards a program that will help our boys. As a society, we tend to view sensitivity as a girl quality and that needs to change. We need to allow our boys to be sensitive, to talk about their big feelings, allow them to cry and allow them to be vulnerable. There is no room for boys will be boys, the boy talk. In closing, I ask that you please use your influence and contacts to reach out to our school community and together help us put pressure on our elected officials to do their job, to protect our children. Our small community is no different than that of evolving. We cannot wait and hope for change. We need to be the change. Signed, Yessenia Kachimbo. This letter was also co-signed by 38 parents and grandparents. And together, we are asking the board to use its influence to address in our voice to protect our community. Thank you.
What's your name?
Hey. Hi, I'm Michelle Leo. I am here mostly in solidarity with Yessenia, but I also feel compelled to speak after listening to the presentation on security and safety. With all due respect, criminals, it invoked an enormous amount of emotion and feels a bit tattered at best as parent. I have Jackson, Laura, eight years old and five years old. And I'm over in Center, one of the elementary school. And I hear about them doing lockdown drills. It is awful, but it's understandable and it's necessary. I, I will not go over time, please don't be concerned. I, when I hear about the doors, I think about the enormous amount of security that I've had to participate in being a nurse at Stony Brook University Medical Center and being a student on the large campus. One of the things that also stands out to me is that when immediately after the Baldi shooting occurred, Stony Brook University sent out a letter to all of the faculty, the students, and the alumni expressing their response to what had occurred. This did not occur from our district. I am not expressing shame and blame, but rather saying, I wanted it. I wanted to hear something. I wanted to know what was happening for my kids. I wanted to know how it was being addressed or not addressed, which is also a fine decision to make. But I wanted to know what that decision was so that I knew how to navigate my home situation with my children, how to navigate my own emotions and just to know what was going on with their safety. The fact that these door, that there's, that we had teachers expecting to fumble with a lock during fear is kind of appalling to me. And with our district budget that we just passed again, I would certainly expect it would make room to enhance the security for our children. I walked in here tonight, guys. No issue. Not, no one asked for my name, no one asked me for my thing. I recognize that we're after hours. There's a whole basketball team in here. So I want to end on that, no, please, no. I walked into this building. I was not identified, nor did I require to identify myself. I casually said, I'm heading that way. They said, yep, and that's it. That's not okay. I've been to many districts off island. I've worked with it for various reasons. There's no uniform, it's not security going on up island. We live in a really precious district where I think that we fall a little bit under the Sandy Hook line if it wouldn't happen to us. And it did happen to Sandy Hook and it certainly could because there are disgruntled people. There are boys who are still expecting to be whatever it is that society expects them to be, who are disgruntled and disenfranchised. And to speak to the community needs, our community has had a deficit for years. And if the Board of Ed and the district educators have a role there, it would be meaningful. There's never been anything for the community. It was a small attempt, feeble attempt in the town once upon a time where the meals alone happens. So thank you for your time. I appreciate it. And let us know, parents are here to help.
Thank you. Or anybody else here in person for public input number one? Ms. Fisher, is there anybody online?
Nobody with a hand raised.
Nobody with a hand raised.
Are there any questions in the chat?
No.
Any board member with standing or move on to the next. Thank you for the those of you with your thoughts and showing us your back.
Thanks for hearing us.
Six of things agenda. Start with Ms. Gary Arrow.
So good evening, everyone. I'm going to transition the phone a little bit later of talking about events. I appreciate all the feedback from our parents. So today we got to celebrate our valedictorian and salutatorian on the East End with Assemblyman Mr. Field, Fred Field, Pearson alum. We had to remind in time our community there, like about fifteen times when he was a Pearson alum. So our kid got an extra shout out, which is always pretty good. So kudos to Abigail Porridge and Eva Yulo who got celebrated. We actually on Sunday won two teen awards. Another shout out to Zoe Richardson for actress, best actress and supporting actor Everett McMahon for our fall play, which was produced by Mr. Holden. Our sixth grade orientation is coming up on this Thursday for incoming fifth grade families. We're excited to have them in. As well as it's now, I call it award or event planning season where we feel like wedding planners, but excited that we get to celebrate our children. The end of our concert series happens on Wednesday. Mr. Rensson will have the band playing. Academic Awards then following Monday at five o'clock for grades nine through eleven. Wednesday, it's going to be our second annual senior night. This is a new thing that we do where we have all of the seniors and their families come together under a tent outside in the backfield, something great that we got from COVID. Instead of being squished in the auditorium, we get to celebrate all and it feels like white and gray. And we get to celebrate our seniors one last time. And then on Friday of that week, the moving up ceremony will be following the fifth grade celebration on June seventeenth at one thirty for our eighth graders coming up into high school. And the bittersweet sending off our seniors will happen on Thursday at morning program where they get to walk the track. It's kind of exciting to see them just go back to in their caps and gowns and celebrate them one more last time before graduation on the twenty fifth on Pearson Hill at five o'clock.
Any questions for Mr. Arrow?
Good evening, everyone. Just like here at Pearson, we are in the celebratory phase of the school year and there's so many great events happening. Too many to mention all this evening, but I do, because I spoke about this at the last board event meeting, I don't want to miss saying a big congratulations to the fifth graders on the wax museum presentation. It was actually the twenty sixth time that Sarah Parker Almish was presented that. I need to say it's a it's a strong tradition in that community. You know, the students did a fabulous job and a big thank you to their parents and also the faculty and staff who guided that. They spoke about the project being somewhat of a kind of similar to a senior project in a high school. It's like capstone, capstone project that's just did a great job. So thanks, everyone. We do have our fifth grade celebration on the seventeenth. Thanks Pearson for hosting us here. Last year, due to COVID, we we held it under the tent. But what we learned, as we did with many of the adjustments we had, it actually was a very symbolic ceremony. We walked over and we're going to do this again, walked over from the elementary school and then actually physically moved up to Pearson Middle School. They were greeted by the middle school teachers made their way to the tent and we had a great celebration. So we're looking forward to that. Kindergarten show is happening once again. Our pre-K moving up will happen that last day, last week of the school year and then of course, field day and beach day down at Mo Beach. And it's just a fun time and we all still have a lot to beat down. I also want to end with congratulating our musicians, our fourth and fifth grade students who are involved in our instrumental program and we offer bands. We have our orchestra and we also have guitar initially chose to do group showcases. So families have been invited in and musicians have performed and they've done a great job. So we're really big times at the school.
Questions for Ms. Law?
I just wanted to mention tomorrow, I ran into some parents who have had older kids in the school already go through and have children in the fifth grade and they really were very appreciative that it was outside around the track. They said that it was so much more enjoyable and you could see everybody, you know, that that school can get hot sometimes, particularly during during the, but anyway, so they just sang the praises of that decision and thought it was the best.
Yeah, that's been the consensus.
Yes, yeah. This is like second or third.
Last year we did. I think it's here.
Okay, thank you.
Brian, before you start with these next five items, they're all an action item?
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you. Seven point one under tenure recommendations. Is there a motion section for item seven point one?
Second.
Any discussion?
I sat next to Brittany the night she came in for her first. She was walking down the hallway and I sat next to her at that first one. So I wanted to be the one to say yes.
Sandy and I both had children that were in her first year middle school and they still, Samantha still notes that when she references you, she's like, you know, we were her senior year. She got off to a good start with us. They take credit for all of your success. But anyway, I just want to thank you for staying with us and serving in many roles.
Thank you very much. With that, Mary, please open up the voting.
That's unanimous.
Item seven point two on tonight's agenda is the grant tenure to Amanda Warren, elementary classroom teacher. Is there a motion?
Some.
Is there a second? Any discussion? Doesn't have to be.
Thank you. That's unanimous.
Seven point three, the tenure recommendation of Deborah Armishwitz, special education teacher. Great. Any discussion?
That's unanimous.
Seven point four is is there a motion to grant tenure to Keegan Wade, special education teacher? Discussion. Mary, please open up the voting.
That's unanimous.
Seven point, seven point five on tonight's agenda. Is there a motion to grant tenure to Caitlin Literello, mathematics teacher, seven to twelve? Is there a second? Any discussion? Mary, please open up the voting.
That's unanimous.
You all have to work very early in the morning. Only one person to stay, but you don't have.
Congratulations, guys.
On our consent agenda, is there a motion for consent agenda items eight point two through eight point two four?
With withdrawing eight point.
Is there a motion? Is there a second? Any discussion?
Here are Mr. Motto and Mr. Blockland.
Yes.
They've all been here for quite some time.
They've been here for a long time, Mr. Blockland, not quite as long as Mr. Motto and Mr. Fear. But all three of them are happy to have some retirement and building miss.
We are on to discussion, public input number two. Same rules apply for public input number two as I read previously. Anybody here, anybody on the line which participate? Public input number two, raise your hand, put your question in the chat box, raise your hand here. With that, next I'm going to ask for a motion to convene into executive session to discuss contracts of a particular person and the superintendent's evaluation. Motion carries the board to go into executive session, publicly, effectively end conclusion of executive session, the board of not the sole purpose pending public meeting. With that, is there a motion?
Some.
Any discussion? All in favor? Take a handout. Great. We're into executive session. Thank you everyone for coming.
Thank you.